Okay, being six o'clock, I'll open this meeting of the Endfield Board of Selectmen. Hold the order. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of February 1st and February 2nd.
I move that we approve them as a result.
Do we want to step down since you and I were there when the president was second, so that Meredith can vote on the first?
Oh, do them separately?
Yeah, I'm thinking that way.
Which is the first one?
February 1st.
So I move we accept the minutes of February 1st as presented.
Seconds?
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Then the other was February 2nd, right?
Right.
I move that we accept the minutes of February 2nd as presented.
Seconds?
All in favor?
I.
I.
Board reports.
Nothing for me.
Planning Board is meeting next week. And Eva participated in, yes, of course they did. Ice Day and did many other organizations and it was very successful. And while the ice was a little bit squishy and slushy, it was really nice weather and a really great time. So Meredith, I'm sure can add to that. That's all I have.
Yes, I'll second that. It was, I think the weather, although the ice wasn't good for Ice Day, everything else was lovely. And it was just nice to be outdoors and around other people. We kept a fire going, although it wasn't really necessary, but I don't know if there's something about a fire that gathers people. We had a Lakeside Park meeting. It was the 7th, I guess. And we're continuing to plod forward while anticipating some redevelopment of the parking area in the spring. Patty Freed is working on planning. She presented to the Master Gardeners of New Hampshire last week. And got a wonderful commendation from the woman at University of New Hampshire that runs the Master Gardener Program. Who told her that this was, her project is Lakeside Park, Patty's project. They're looking for other projects in Grafton County. So if anybody knows of an interesting project in Grafton County, pass it along.
I have one. Friends of Mascoma has one. I'll find her.
It does better with organizations. Eva wanted her to do the plantings on Main Street and that wasn't acceptable to the Master Gardener people. But then she presented Lakeside Park as her project and that was acceptable.
Yep, this would be a fixed location project. I will check with her. Thank you.
So that's it. We haven't had a heritage meeting. That one is coming up. We also will be presenting to the Planning Board on the 23rd regarding the Enfield Center Historic Triangle. I see there's no communications at this time. And we'll roll down to the business.
Town Manager Report.
Oh, sorry. Moving right along.
So I did have a few things I wanted to share. First, I wanted to start off by thanking the Enfield Fire Department, Police Department, and all the surrounding communities that responded to yesterday's fire on Wells Street. So the building had to come down and we displaced the tenant. I think it's great to say that there was a swift response. I think 14-minute response time from a in-house volunteer fire department. So a good response time and it was good that nobody was hurt.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like to thank them and all the responding towns and departments that helped. Also wanted to reiterate the thank you to the Mascoma Lake Skating Association for hosting the Mascoma Ice Days. As we mentioned, it was a little slushy and warm to be out there skating, but it was a great time to come together and visit with people in a safe outdoor setting. So I just thank them and the other organizations for participating in that event. Update on the invasive species RFQ. We have received our supplemental responses back, as I told you at the last meeting. I worked with Jack because he wanted to stay involved in this project. So we talked a little bit this week and we narrowed it down to to one company that I will be calling. I want to have an interview and talk with them. And then I'll be bringing that forward hopefully the next meeting to the select board to make our final decision.
I have a question. I realize that this work is going to be on town-owned property. Are we going to do any attempt to educate the general public about this also?
Yeah, a big part of this RFQ was putting together education and some, some classes and discussions to let people know what was going on and to do some, some continued education moving forward. The company we did look at is looking at this a little bit as a kind of a model that they can prepare and other towns and communities can use this. So it's, it's going to be a great project moving forward and I look forward to talking with them and working with them in the future.
And will you involve organizations like the Upper Valley Land Trust? They, they have their own point person on.
We will involve some of them. I know I talked to someone from the Mascoma Lake Association the other day and they, they wanted to be involved and we'll be working with them.
Yeah, they had.
Together to get the, get the word out to help people.
It was two or three years ago. They had Allison Marchioni from the Land Trust. That's her favorite work is invasive species. And she came and addressed the Lake Association. Just that and particularly not we.
So we'll be looking. I don't know who the consultants will use to put some of that together, but I'm going to be working with them to move that project forward. Just a reminder, the Grafton County Broadband Committee is hosting this week three regional meetings. One of them is going on right now. The other one is tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 at Plymouth State University in the Bradford Room. And then on February 17th, there's Zoom from 2:00 to 4:00. And we did put that information out. Information and if you need the link to Zoom, you can get ahold of us at the, at the town office as well. And we've been notified by the state of New Hampshire DOT that there's a roadway project coming on Route 4 here in Enfield. It's not happening this year, but they are going to be out this year looking at properties and talking to people. Just really doing an inventory of what the, what the current landscape looks like throughout the summer and that they'll be moving forward to typically that.
Yeah, that's going to be just a huge project.
I don't suppose it's including sidewalks?
I was going to say sidewalks, sidewalks, sidewalks.
I, from my understanding from the one meeting that I attended, it's going to be pretty comprehensive. It's going to look at a lot of different things.
True lane.
So this year it sounds like what they're mainly doing is doing an existing inventory of what the, you know, what the drainage looks like, where there's flower beds, buildings, everything, so they can prepare and engineer the projects. But that'll be going. There are letters that went out to people that live in that area, that state people will be wandering around and coveting like their property. So just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that the state will be in the area this summer doing that, starting that project. And then I don't really have a lot to report today, but I wanted to ensure the select board that we're continuing to work forward on the, the facilities projects that were put on the warrant. I've worked with Bread Loaf a little bit and I've worked with some property owners and other people around the, around the area. I've talked with a couple town administrators and town managers about public safety projects that they've done in the past or that they're currently working on to make sure that we're, we're kind of in the ballpark doing, doing what we need to do moving forward. I also took the time last week to tour Whitney Hall, the police station, Union Street Fire Station, and the Depot Street ambulance facility. I took quite a few pictures, looked around familiar myself with those buildings. I mean, so I'm putting a PowerPoint together with some still photographs and then I'm also something we had talked about, but I looked at the town of Bristol has put together some videos. They're doing a public safety complex as well this year. So we're going to kind of steal the way they've done their videos. I really like the way they do those. And I'm going to be working with the police chief, fire chief, and a few people to, to see if we can put those videos together.
I think visuals would be highly effective. That's a great idea.
Well, I really like the videos because not only the visual of what the problem is, but the discussion of, you know, how the antiquated facilities affect the fire department and what changes need to be made technologically and for safety reasons in the building. So I think it'll be good to have those narrated tours and walk around and have those videos available. Then we can make the facilities available as well if people want to come down at some time. Two other quick updates. As we talked at the last meeting, I did sit down yesterday with Dr. Tice and top Conservation Commission. We talked a little bit about the Peter Tabor project at 84 Georgetown Road. I explained to him kind of where the, where the town was at, what we could do, what we couldn't do. And we had a good discussion about the Conservation Commission and I think we're, we're in an understanding on that project and that it's kind of in the DHS's hands right now and we'll, we'll see where that goes forward going.
To what lens vision is it?
Yeah, it is some and the DHS will, will be looking at that part of it. You know, our town, we have our zoning bylaws and rules and we, we need to follow those. We can't really step outside of those too much.
I think the concern I have is, you know, the risk this poses to the town for a lawsuit. And he's in the butter and he took kind of a little side trip and filed with DES without a vote from the Conservation Commission. So that's a problem. And I was in that Conservation Commission meeting, as I told you, and I was told that my husband and I are holders. Just incorrect five times. So I think it's just important for people to understand and maybe we need to do a better job on worrying people. But I think it's been very clearly stated that there are procedures at this point.
Yeah.
I have some pretty serious concerns.
Yeah, I don't know if you had any discussion with him about the leadership of the committee. But I, I think that for many people in the committee, it's a concern. He's somewhat autocratic.
Yeah. We talked about that a little bit, not very much, but I did spend quite a bit of time talking about RSA 91A. And you know, the, the meeting issue that we had a couple of weeks ago and made sure that he, he fully understood pretty much what needed to be warned, what could happen, what couldn't happen. If we came to a, a good understanding at the end of the meeting. So I'll continue working with him. I do have a couple of things I was going to send in the next couple of days to make sure he understood a little bit more information. But it's still work in progress. It's something that we'll, we'll continue working on if we move forward.
Yeah, but I am going to insist that kindness is going to be. We can't discourage people from attending meetings. We can't demean other members. We can't write them that stuff.
Kindness is always a good idea.
And then I wanted to go ahead and just update you on a couple of positions. We resubmitted the deputy clerk's position. I did that earlier last week. We now have 11 applicants and we're going through the interview process and we're hoping that we'll be able to make a, a job. We'll be able to make a offer here really soon. And yesterday I went ahead and we released the Recreation Director position. I know that's on the budget for a town meeting, but we wanted to go ahead and get that process started since it was so widely supported. So we put that out yesterday and we have four applicants as of today. And a couple of them look like they'll be, they'll be good. We'll probably be calling them in for interviews. We'll continue leaving that one open for a little while and see what we get for the rest of the week. And that's the end of my town manager.
I forgot to mention that there was also an Old Home Day meeting. City and Dolores Struckoff and Misty Tuttle were elected as co-chairs. And you should be getting those minutes, Elisa. I sent them to, I took the minutes and sent them to Dolores for her review and edits. So I will remind her to send them on to you.
Really exciting for the beginning of the numbers.
Okay. ARPA funds to enter into a grant agreement and authorize town managers to execute water and sewer budgets. You mean we're finally getting going on the water and sewer?
We are. We're getting going. We were, when I came on, we were working on some funding issues. We were looking at whether we wanted to move in the SRF loan direction or use the USDA loan. I actually missed that meeting because I had something else going on, but Jim Taylor met with USDA and the people from the SRF program together. They all discussed and actually all of them recommended that we move in the direction of the SRF loans. Even the USDA people said it was a better option for us at this time. So we're, we looked at moving in that direction. We're still asking for authorization to get a loan up to $1.9 million. But putting in that loan, they've offered us an ARPA grant if we're fully funded of up to $950,000 of that. So it's a, it's a pretty good chunk of money. And to move this process forward, I need authorization from the select board to enter into that loan and to accept those grant funds if awarded. I did send Kate a fairly lengthy motion, so.
Always a good plan.
If you guys are okay with it, she can read the motion and we can discuss this.
I make a motion. We authorize the town manager to borrow up to.
1.9 million.
Yeah, I think that's measured too. So okay, motion. Up to amount not to exceed $1,900,000 for wastewater systems improvements as approved by the voters of Enfield on May 1st, 2021, from the New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund and to accept American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in an amount up to $950,000 for the same and hereby authorize the town manager or his designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
So there might have been an extra two.
No, I don't know, but I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. So go for it, Ed.
Thank you.
And what who won that Sunday?
Yeah.
No, that was a, that was a good one.
Good to hear that it's finally getting underway. Proposed declaration of vehicles and equipment as surplus property.
Vehicle sounded pretty well used.
I make a motion. We surplus the 2003 Ford F-350 Truck 200, 2013 Ford Taurus Police Cruiser, 2002 HydroTech Trailer Steam Pressure Washing Unit as printed on the Mandar Miranda and dated January 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
I could use that power washer.
I'd like to know where it's up from.
Depot Street property.
So yes, we received this letter last week, this last week.
From Lou Barker.
Coming forward and, you know, Sue Brown's been working on this quite diligently. So we, we got this and this is for the little sliver portion of property in front of her property at 15 Depot Street. I was excited at first. You can ask some of the office. I thought it was for property under the depot.
That I was hoping.
I thought that.
We looked at it. This is just for the section in front of her property. I did talk to the state that day and they are working on the property under the depot street. So we, we should be seeing that in the future. But this is just for that property, but being state property, the town has first right of refusal on this land. So we're bringing this forward to the, to the select board, asking that we waive our right to purchase this land. I don't think this is a, a section of land that we would want at all.
It's essentially her front yard.
Yes.
And she takes care of all the funding of this, this purchase. I take it.
Yes. She, she's paid part. And she would have to, yeah, she would have to pay the purchase price and the administrative fees that go along.
Has the land under the depot itself been appraised yet?
The state's working on that.
Well, when we bought the land from DOT for Lakeside Park, one of the DOT engineers urged me to get it appraised before the state appraisal came in, which is why we got it for the low price that we did. I wondered if there would be any chance of getting Norm Bernage to get it.
Norm won't do it. I worked extensively with Jack on this because we had had this discussion and I, I thought that was a good process.
I can find somebody to.
I have, I was going to say, I gave Jack a very long list of realtors and appraisers around the Upper Valley. And he could give you an idea, but he had come up with nobody and had Susan.
He said he was having trouble. I think I have somebody I can call.
Okay, that would be great because the lists that I, I mean, and it was long.
It looks like Susan has a question, Susan.
It's not a question, it's a comment about those realtors. Every one of those realtors on the list had their response was, there are no comparables, so we can't do it. The condos are those houses over by the museum. But when I looked at what it was and what it's square foot, if I complain, it'll save me $150 and it's not worth complaining. So as soon as I can buy it, I will. So please vote. Let me have it.
So with that, I'll make a motion. We waive the town of Enfield's right to purchase the land adjacent to Susan Brown's property at 15 Depot Street as presented in the New Hampshire DOT letter of February 4th, 2022.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you. Okay, do send a thank you to Lou Barker, Susan. I'm getting constant contact with Lou Barker. Email every three, two weeks. It's headed nag, nag, nag.
I think he's been on fire for three years now. Okay, set the public hearing date for bonds over $100,000 for Whitney Hall and the Public Safety Facility. Must be prior, must be 15 to 60 days prior to the vote, March 1st to April 15th.
So we had the public hearing for Whitney Hall. We were moving through, but we have, you know, as we were approving our warrant, we talked with our attorney and that needs to be within that 50 to 60-day window. So we need to set another public hearing, which we needed to do for the Public Safety Building anyway. So if we set a date in that timeframe, then we can go ahead and warrant that and move forward.
Do you want to make a recommendation for people for to get sufficient time to get information?
I would be okay with April 4th. That doesn't mean we can't present stuff at the normal select board meetings leading up to that, but that's, that's probably a good day right now, about halfway between now and town meeting.
What day of the week is it?
It's the Monday with our normal select board meeting.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
So it's not a separate deal with the community.
I love that idea. See, I went straight for my brain.
Okay, fraud policy review.
So we're, we're bringing these forward. We just had our audit, but during the time of the interim town manager and not having anything, not that they brought this up actually, Kate did brought it to my attention and it's something that we're, we're supposed to be reviewing these financial policies on an annual basis. So we're just bringing these forward for the select board to review them and make any changes if you think changes are needed or just reapprove that these are, these are our policies that we're going to use. So the fraud policy and the investment policy will be coming up next. Just a little side note on that. I've been working to look at our ordinances and policies. And one of the things that I do want to do is add, you know, a couple of policies to hopefully each select board meeting moving forward. So we start reviewing policies and getting up to date.
It's a good idea.
Would we do a first read and a second read format possibly? The reason I say that is a lot of times you get some ideas and you, you think about it and then you do a second read unless it's very urgent. But then I can do the first read discussion, second reading and the vote. That's what we've done for school board. I don't know if other towns do it, but.
You can do that.
I, I don't know what you guys think. Because often we get the policies on, say like, if we get them late Thursday and it's a busy business day, then you don't have a lot of time to, in business time to.
As I say, we can do it. We can do policy however we want to do it.
Or you can send them earlier.
I would be more in favor of sending them earlier. Yeah.
Because you, you know.
I can do that. I'm working on a calendar right now. So if I get the calendar, we can send them ahead of time. What I am doing right now is putting a calendar together and then segregating them into departments. So the staff will review them and send any recommendations to you. And then we could have time, but we can try to do that in a way where we're, maybe even at this meeting, we're letting you know what we're going to be doing and that's it. It goes forward with recommendation prior to the meeting.
Control of the investment policies go on the next agenda?
And they can decide.
No, I'm fine. But I mean, I, I prepared for this one. I was just wondering.
I thought they're pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, is there anything that is not working in terms of operations?
I would ask Elisa.
Well, I was glad to see the first line, first three words under objectives for the investment policy was safety a principle to be the foremost objective.
Yeah, and there's laws around that as well. We're not going to be out making any risky investments with town boards.
As we're doing these, I wonder if it would be a good time to just, I'm not saying put it into the policy, but say to ourselves, this policy should be included for people who are joining the trustees and the selectors. Right? And so that we start giving policy or flagging policies for appropriate committees. I'm not saying we shouldn't have a policy manual that's comprehensive, but maybe just start thinking about how we distribute them and how we train people to be, you know, because the more eyes we have on these and the more eyes we have on it, the better safer we're going to be. Is that a?
That's reasonable.
Because at school board, they just throw a whole book at you and they're like, it's for you to go and it's huge.
And no one looks at it.
I spent a lot of time on it because I was the chair.
Almost no one looks.
Yeah, right. And then Dan looks at it. I'm sure, I assure you.
I don't know how soon it'll happen, but it may be good to have like a, a little welcome packet of those types of things they should look at. And maybe even just bullet point flags some policies they can look at. One of my goals is to have them organized well and on the town website.
A great idea.
Put in policies as they could approve. So these are already on the websites, but we might need to organize them better. I think they're up to that.
Right, because we have some that are policies and we have some that are, are ordinances. My, my favorite, my favorite ordinance is the noise ordinance. And if you ever see the original, I want to pop it. Because if you haven't read our noise ordinance, it's pretty fantastic.
Yes, basically everything that is new goes up on the website and anything that people have acquired about goes up on the website.
That's a great setup.
No, that way we get the older ones up there as people have interest. So have we covered both fraud policy and investment policy? Or there's, is there anything else that we need to?
Do you want to motion?
I would like, I would make individual motions.
All right. So I make a motion that we, I don't, what do we want to say? Review? Accept it for review and reaffirm.
Review and, yeah, reaffirm's a good word. Review and reaffirm the fraud policy.
I'll make a motion. We reaffirm the fraud policy as printed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
And investment policy.
I'll make a motion that we reaffirm investment policy as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, old home day appointments, term expiration.
Right, so you approved appointments, but we didn't have expiration dates on them.
Okay.
Basically, you have a list in front of you and the ones that I received first, I put on them for the longest term and the ones I've received.
Okay.
The shorter term, but it's up to you.
Yeah.
However you want to do it. If you're good with this, then I will just note it on the, it looks fine to me.
And Patty Freed has expressed an interest in joining. Is there a limit to the number of people?
The more people, the more work they can get.
Yeah, and at one point. Yeah, and at one point, the, the membership was raised to ten people, but there's really no set limit. Whatever you wanna do, it's your committee.
Okay, well, it's not mine. It's Misty Tuttle and Dolores Struckoff.
Actually, it's the Selectments Committee uniformed them.
Okay.
We could send her the volunteer form.
Well, she's gonna be away for a while, so.
Uh, I can email her a link to the form online.
We could totally use Microsoft forms and it could zap it right in for us.
Okay, uh, new tax warrant, Maple Street, Enfield acquisition.
That just something we need to sign or?
Uh, that, that's a new tax warrant, so that's just your typical administrative item. We do have one extra administrative item that's not on the agenda. So with that fire, typically what we do is we abate.
Right.
So we have an abatement here for four hundred dollars and forty cents, and there's forty-four days at nine dollars and ten cents.
Public comments, Dan?
Just, just one, because you were talking about the investment policy.
Yeah.
As a part of CIP this year, we looked at the outstanding loans. And we were looking at, you know, I mean, you're getting like one percent.
Yeah.
And we're looking, we said, well, you've got two loans out there that are over the next two or three years. And they're, we're paying like four percent on it, and I'm saying, well, why don't we, let's pay those off early on CIP. So we'll be coming with a recommendation after town meeting, because you were the agents to expand. The other thing we were looking at is, everything happens at the end of the year with CIP. It happens with their investment, because they set, the trustees set up their. To all come do it one time. So what, what we were looking at is to break it out, even if you broke it out June and December.
Yeah.
That way, we're, we're getting these loans, we're waiting till the end of the year.
And you're looking at everything all at once.
I mean, we were, CIP was there doing it in November and we hadn't seen any of the loans for the prior year. And the money going in doesn't go in until December. Because that's when all the investments come due, so, I mean.
Sounds like certainly something to be considered.
Something to consider.
Yeah.
That's something we have to work with the trustees and trustees, because that's their, their decision to do it once a year. That is something that they tried to work with them on.
I mean, CIP has its benefits. The, the warrant articles will put out where you're gonna use unextended funds on a couple of things. Which to us would be, that would be voice CIP funds that maybe could retire another loan. Because if we're gonna start getting into building and things like that, we have a lot of outstanding loans out there, and fewer loans might be better.
Okay, I see Celia has her hand up. Celia? Uh, we can't hear you, Celia.
Now you can hear me. I had a couple things I wanted to comment about. The first thing was, when, when you were talking about the pesticides report, your. What you're planning on doing, which I, I really don't know, but I wanted to know if you referred that to the Conservation Commission?
It's for Japanese knotweed infestation.
Well, it's invasive species and the Conservation Commission was aware of going now to debate, to let them know.
Okay, now I know what you're talking about. But again, refer to them because it's all over the place, so. They can have a look, say, make sure we're not doing anything we shouldn't do. Anyway, um, the other thing I wanted to, uh, bring up is that. And I got this from a meeting a while back with, uh, the previous town manager, not Jack, Brian. And one of the things that he brought up was when, when everybody was discussing putting the, uh, buildings. The new buildings on a warrant article, uh, you know, trying to raise the money. He brought up the fact that if you get a bond approved, or to have bonds. That in fact allows you to go for all the money to, to build buildings. And I wanted to know if the Select Board understood that, because it can look like, I mean, it could be by your vote. People can say, well, you, the town voted, the, the Selecting voted on it, therefore it's alright to do. And I wanna make sure that you understand that if they, this gets voted in. The, the town manager could, could probably okay the whole project, so. Anyway, that's what I wanted you, make you aware of. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm not gonna lie, the answer to that is no, on my part. I'm not sure I followed your logic.
Well, I was there and I was astounded because I think Ryan pushed every which way that he could get these through. And that one's telling you not to worry, because if you get it, a vote on a bond, it'll give us the authorization to go forward with it. So I just want, you can check it with the town attorney. But. I believe that. It's in the law, so.
Yeah, I think everybody hears that at least one or two of them.
Okay, so you know.
Yep, thank you for reminding us.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
I'll make a motion, will it turn?
Why, Kate?
I know.
Yeah, I'll second that. There's gotta be a record or some sort.
All in favor. Holy cow, you isn't ready.
I couldn't pre-make dinner because the last time I made anything, it advanced the dog. Right out of the frying pan. Pregnant dog ate two pounds of chicken. You do what's so up front.